Yeah, but yeah. Um, normally, like I said, I don't know. I don't know.
And another thing, another state agency or something.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to open the meeting to public comments? Is there any public comment?
I have a letter that I'd like to read. My name is Cheryl Campbell, Commissioners. During the public comment of Commissioners Meeting of March 25th, 2019, I asked about the status of the deep creek project. I was assured by the Chairman, Mr. Delta, that the project was completed and everything was all done. At the April 8th, 2019, Mr. Sean Haley of WWC presented the Commissioners with documents necessary to close the deep creek grant project. I would like copies of those documents. Please arrange to have those copied and notify me of their availability at the clerk and recorder's office on or before July 19th, at which time I will pick them up and make the appropriate payment. Thank you. I'd like this included in the minutes.
Thank you. Any other please comment? Let's see, we'll go to the, uh, did you have one, Jessica?
Um, I was asked by Jody Moore to just let people know that there will be a meeting, a Commissioner meeting on July 10th. Is that correct, Commissioners? In, at the Three Forks? Sorry, at the livestock sale ring at 5:30. Jody asked me to have a comment. There's my comment.
Then we go on to the 10 o'clock certificate of survey review of price family transfer.
So a couple of things. I did not bring my COS down here. Oh, my goodness. I thought I left it there. I'll be back.
Watch yourself, my head passes, I'm gonna do this around.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. Corey was going to be down here, uh, of course, once, and I had a conversation with Terry Depew on this. So I don't necessarily want to speak to his conversation.
There is. So do you have a recommendation on this, Nicole?
Um, you know, I... In looking through our regulations and the document that was adopted by the Commission on May 12th, I think we also need to have a discussion on procedure. According to our regulations, it says when a division of land for which an exemption is claimed is submitted to the planner, the planner should cause documents to be reviewed by designated agents of the governing body. The planner and the governing body shall review the claimed exemptions to verify its proper use of the claimed exemption. Then we have this document that we use here that we've been following this procedure that talks about the COS review procedure. So I think, um, you know, this is pointed out by Terry Depew that we really need to be sure we're following the proper procedure as far as the review. My thoughts in looking at this, you know, they are a gift to members of the immediate family, apparently, but it does fit a pattern of development in the area.
And did you talk to Sarah, to Sarah?
Tara.
What's her last name?
Depew.
Depew?
I did not.
You did not. Corey, did you have a chance to talk to Sarah?
I did. Yep, I met with Tara last either Tuesday or Wednesday. Sent all the documents, we went over all of them.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Corey for a rundown of that conversation and some details of his perspective?
Yeah, I'll go if you're...
So the, um... One of the things that I think you all know, like the statutes specifically deals with allowing these various exemptions for subdivision review, one of which is the family transfer here. But it, you know, it specifically says that unless the method of disposition is adopted for the purpose of evading the subdivision in Plating Act, I think that's the question. In looking at this document and all these parcels, the thing that I think sticks out is that, um... You know, this, this, I guess it would be a third full paragraph. Third full paragraph. He's, the applicant specifically stating that they're dividing it so that each individual may own and sell a 28 acre tract. And then, um... There's, there's a clarification that, I think there's a clarification from, from the intention stated in the, in the letter that the purpose of this is to do divisions without doing subdivision. And, um... Those exemptions, you know, by law, the exemptions for the subdivision act are to be construed narrowly. I think this would be a very, very wide exemption from the subdivision act. It would basically, it would accomplish a subdivision without without having to go through the process. The other thing is in the, in the regulations, the criteria to review in terms of determining whether something's done to evade a subdivision. I don't know if you have that page handy. There's a criteria for review of exemptions.
I'm going to the planner.
Yeah. I'll find it in a second. So I guess my recommendation is that, my recommendation is our procedures indicate that the planner is to take these documents, review them, provide them to the applicable county officials, and then basically make a recommendation to the Commission. And then obviously the applicant can disagree and basically leave that to the Commission's decision. I'm not sure if this is one where, where we're likely to see, um, you know, some post-decision litigation. If there's concern about that, what might make sense to do is to do some actual factual findings based on these documents, but I'm certainly comfortable with a recommendation that to not approve this as a family transfer. It looks, I mean, this, this looks very clearly like a attempt to evade subdivision.
So do we, do we have, do we, do we have a committee in place to, to review these with you, or who, who would that include?
Well, the existing, the existing language says that she shall submit them or provide, cause them to be reviewed by the, by designated agents of the county, myself, Sanitarian, and then the applicable treasurer and court and recorder. I understand there is a proposal to form a, a committee, a review committee for, um, certificates of surveying, so if you do that, I would recommend that be incorporated into the procedures here. So it's kind of, it's, it's, it's not a committee, but it is a direction to have it reviewed by the other officials.
And I think what's most important, we just got to be sure that our regulations are mimicking our actual procedure or our procedure is mimicking our regulations.
So who would you have, the county attorney, the sanitarian, two of us?
Someone from the treasurer, clerk and recorder's office.
And did we also write down the examining survey or was all that?
We did, um, that's on my list as well, as well as Public Works and the Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, we decided to skip Public Works.
But those are not mimicked in our regulations.
Okay, okay.
And so I think until we update our regulations, we should stick with what we have in our regulations.
Right now.
And we do, we don't have committee necessarily. When I receive a COS from a surveyor, I do forward it on to the sanitarian for comment, but not the county attorney and not the clerk and recorder treasurer's office. So not to get ahead of ourselves on the agenda, but I think that's the thing, just to take note of.
Do you have a further discussion?
Is Corey still looking for something for us, or?
Um, there was a, I thought there was a checklist that I was going to go through and organize that with you. I guess specifically as to this, this, this application. I don't know if you've had, if you've looked at these documents, but I mean, it's a formation of multiple lots that according to the application, the purpose of it is to, um, provide them to be, to be sold by the different people that are going to receive them. And then there's, although after the two-year period because it's in, it's in CRP, until it's like 2022. So it is still currently to, uh, subdivide them so they can be sold individually sometime after 2022. And, um... The other thing I thought... The other thing I thought was, was interesting was that it was specifically, um... It appears that the intent is also to reduce the fees associated with going through the commission process. So I guess in the context of where this place is, is where, there's some road issues there. There's some, so pointing to the public services. This would, um, basically provide these recipients the opportunity to evade a lot of those obligations that the rest of the public is going to have to deal with in terms of road improvements, infrastructure, et cetera. So I would recommend you take all that into account.
Okay.
But I know, I think there's people here in the audience that may want to come and sit here, so. We'll all go sit back down.
Thank you, Corey.
Is there, is there a motion then to approve, disapprove, or how do you want to handle, go forward with this?
May I speak first?
Yes, sir.
I'm Dale Price, the gentleman who's involved with this family transfer. I've been working for over two years to make sure I can comply with the law and do it right. I've met with Nicole several times about the various options, both the sanitaria, about what's required for subdivision, the roads and so forth. As a former who's owned land out there for up to 6,000 acres for several years, it says that according to the law, that the exemption applies to the tract of land located outside of a platted subdivision. Is this a platted subdivision out there? Is there a platted subdivision out there? Yes or no?
No.
No, okay. So this applies to an area where outside of a platted subdivision, okay? A landowner on such a parcel by gift, parcel, a single portion thereof to each family member of his or immediate family in each county where the landowner owns such parcel, okay? The law says that I can do that. Immediate family means spouse, child, by blood or adoption, or parents of the landowner. The exemption may be used only by landlords who are natural persons and not by non-carpet legal entities such as corporations, companies, partnerships, and trusts. Okay. When you fill out the realty transfer certificates, it says it's to transfer to a family member. Then also, there's a check mark down there for the three of them, it's to remain agriculture land. The purpose is not necessarily to sell it, the purpose was to divide it. I'm 79 years old, this is a way of taking part of my accumulation and transferring it legally to each of my family members that I want to make them available to it. Can they sell it? Yes. Can they hold it? Yes. My wife back there gets 40 some acres. What is your intent to do as a property?
Hold it for a while.
She told me, you do not plan on selling the land, it's worth more than cash, is her comment to me. Cash is depreciating by, or inflation is wiping out. Her goal says, I plan on holding it. Part of her land is in CRP, part of the, each of the five tracts that are being divided are in the government CRP program, which says that they are farmland. They cannot, if I sell them, if anyone sells them before the date of the end of that CRP contract, there are significant penalties to pay. And so going back, the law used to be in Broadwater County, that you do a family transfer, the next day, sell the property. That the committee has met and said, we should change that. I understand, they said we should have sold it for two years. When I talked to Nicole before the last meeting, she said, the only change that has been made is you, the committee, the Commissioners recommended you have told it for two years. I said, that's no problem. We complied with that. I spoke with Nicole last week before the meeting. She said that everything looked okay. Prepare deeds and the realty transfer certificates and provide them, have them prepared, notarized, and have them available to the meeting. And so that was her recommendation to me. So I was following the recommendation of your county planner, who said that she had reviewed this stuff. The land surveyor had also reviewed it, they said it was fine. Now, we have a change. I don't think it complies with the intent of the law. I don't think it applies to what was discussed and what was recommended. I think I have the right to transfer a parcel of land to each family member. Now, my son, Carl, owns a track of land next to the land that he's, he's receiving something like 30 some acres. He already has 30 some acres to the south of that and another 20 some acres to the west of that, in a parcel. The question was, should we, do we have to have a road that goes from Price Road to his property? According to the, the regulations and the rules, they said, no, family transfer, you don't have to. That was what I was told when I talked to Nicole, I talked to, who was the sanitaria, they said, no, you don't have to have a road. Okay, we didn't put it on the survey, or certificate of survey. This gentleman, my son, owns that land next to it, owns the land, he has an access from that through that property. Now, the intent was not to, to necessarily, he didn't plan on selling it, he's told me. No, I don't plan on selling it. So he's got, I don't know, several more acres than just this tract. Technically, that tract is, if you look on there, was certificate, or a government lot four. When the, when they surveyed it, it was a separate survey, which government lot four. The lot next to that government three, I transferred that to him as, as a government lot three. The county accepted that. The surveyor said, no, I shouldn't have done that. Anyway. So I think that I have worked for years, worked with the people you've set up for me to work with. Nicole was the one, she came to the last meeting, prepared to say, yep, this is appropriate. She made presentations to you saying that laws had gone, a proposed bill had gone to legislature to change this, which hadn't passed, and therefore you can't require what they recommended because that's not part of the law. That's my understanding of what you presented last week. I've tried to talk to Nicole several times, haven't been able to since the meeting, just physically. But again, I ask you to carefully consider my right as an owner of this land to transfer that land to my family members, which I have done, which I've tried to do, haven't done yet. I know my wife says she doesn't plan on selling that land. She may, sometimes, usually, when she dies, it may end up in the heritage, it's a property that could be something to be done with. My other son, who already has that land, he doesn't plan on selling it, it's part of his farming operation. Okay? So based on that, I recommend and hope that you will approve this as a appropriate use of this exemption. Okay? Now, the standpoint of legal issue and what I might do after that, I'm not going to approach it this time. I'm just going to say, this is what the law is, I ask you to follow it and allow me to use this family exemption. Thank you. Any questions?
I do.
Yes?
Would you, Chairman, ask any questions? So have you done this in the past, with previous property in that area?
Have I done this? No.
You've never done any other family transfers?
No. No. My wife did. I did not.
Okay.
My wife bought 160 acres from my mother, divided it between some daughters, okay?
All right, so your wife did, can you tell us what happened to that property?
What happened to that property? Most of it had homes built on it. Uh... I guess there are three tracts that did not have homes built on them. They're, they're been used as grazing land for, for animals. It's farmland. Okay? So no, I did not. Another question?
What, what's the purpose of these, of these water, of these?
I apologize for them being there. The new certificate survey that was supposed to be prepared and available to the meeting had those off. I put them on there. I don't have legally met with the power company to say that's where they should be. I thought it would be wise for just to have them on there. So the, the latest one does not have that on, so I apologize. Picture that as not being there because the one that will be filed will not be there. Also.
Is that the easements for the water lines?
What, yeah, easement for the water line. Not for the water line, it's easement for the power line. I don't know why it said water line. It was intended to be easements for the power lines is what it was intended to be. Now, there's another change. You gentlemen, the gentlemen ladies, recommended last week that there should be a road going from Price Road to Track. Three, I think it is, four?
Four.
Four? Okay. That was to be placed on the, the certificate of survey that was going to be presented today. I, I was amazed that it isn't here, was not done. I don't think it legally needs to be done, but there is a road prepared to provide access to that track. That was the question last time. Daryl said, if he puts a road in, we approve it. So that was the issue that was raised last time, and so that is covered in the news, the certificate of survey, which will be prepared. There will be two changes, number one, the water rights will be, water easements will not be there, and that road will be there. Any other questions?
No question, Mr. Price. So the, the prior, there were five lots from a prior family transfer, you're saying three have been had houses built and sold, but two have not been sold?
There were not five. There were one, two, three, four houses out there. There are one, two, three tracts that have not had houses built on them. The one that's on the east side of Price Road, located between two houses, it's fenced, and the gentleman is using it for grazing of horses, farmland. There's one track over there, which is 40 acres, wasn't 20 acres, it was 40 acres. So he has his home there, and then he has grazing land around that, so he's using that for his horses. Now, that was not land that I subdivided, or I used family transfers for. Now, that was not land that I subdivided, or I used family transfers for.
So, trustee of price, so that's your wife's?
That's right.
But those have all been sold to somebody other than a family member? Is that accurate?
At this point, yes. One of them...
I have a, I have a, I don't know if this, I have a aerial thing that shows a piece divided into four additional pieces, so, it's a total of five, including the original. Am I looking at that correctly?
No.
Okay.
Think, anyway.
How many total parcels were there?
There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, of which, like I said, two of them were sold as a tract, forty acres, to one individual. That's what they were.
But all eight have been sold to somebody other than, whoever originally received them as a family transfer, sold them to someone outside the family. Is that accurate?
I happened to receive one of those tracts. I donated it to my church as a contribution. I took a sixty-thousand-dollar donation. They turned around and sold it for ninety-eight thousand. They're better marketers than I was. Anyway, that's what happened there.
Are any of those eight still owned by?
None of those eight are still owned by family members.
Okay.
Unless they don't need to be. Right?
Well, I guess that's been my concern that I expressed to the commissioners, both with that background and with this proposal here, it looks like they're, it's a subdivision without going through the subdivision process for the purpose of selling them down the road, so, that's...
It's a family transfer, which is legally allowed under the law by an individual who owns the land. He has the right according to the law to, if it's not in a platted subdivision. Is this a platted subdivision? No. Does it qualify as a platted subdivision? No. Am I restricted in that regard? No. Therefore, am I entitled to transfer a portion of twenty acres or more? Now, each one has to be more than twenty acres now, because the road of Price Road, the property line goes to the middle of Price Road. But you, part of that that's in the Price Road, the person who owns the lot has a problem if it's just twenty acres. It has to be more than that, or you have to go through addition review somewhere. So, that's what it is. Okay?
Okay. But the law specifically states, unless this process is being done to evade subdivision requirements, and the commission has, the commission has to make that determination. So, that's, that's my concern.
Okay. Some of the lots were definitely determined. My wife said, she's upset with me for even doing this. Her comment is, "Land is worth more than cash." I've said it before, cash is depreciating in value significantly, land's going up in value. And so, she got her forty-some acres, and she told me she doesn't plan on selling them. So, that is exempt. The other son doesn't plan, he's already got farmland down there. He hasn't sold it. It's been transferred in for several years. He has not sold it. So, therefore, the example of those instances, those were not transferred for the purposes of sale. Okay? Thank you. Any other questions?
No. I don't have any.
Thank you.
So, if you look, if you look at Track Three, which has this piece of land offset off of, it's basically divided by Price Road, if you create what they call a divorce tract there, does that, does that have to go through review or not?
I would have to look at the language for divorce tract, if it can be a divorce tract by a county road, or if it's simply a highway.
Yes.
Divorce tract has to be a deeded highway, which Price Road's not deeded.
Do you have any further discussion or comment? Would anyone care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to not approve this family transfer.
A motion been made to not approve the Price family land transfer. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion.
And if I may, on the grounds of the pattern of development and the appearance to evade the subdivision and plating act.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same, motion carries. Okay, move on to the certificate of policy, certificate of survey policy review.
Can I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes.
Mr. and Mrs. Baggins are here with a certificate of survey.
Oh, okay.
If that is, I assume that's on your agenda, separate from...
Yeah, okay.
Do you have the survey? I'm going to put the mylas out there, similar to just how you do it on the paper. So, Harry and Dave Baggins own property on Baldwin Lane, golf course, this is direction here, Baldwin Lane here. There's a restricted use, or a limited access, sorry, limited access here, with the assumption that it's for golf cart access, you know, that goes down this way, and that there, and then connects with solder link here. This has never been used, however it is there. They are doing a boundary location with their neighbors to the north, Michael and Laura Stevenson, to move this, because their garage lies within ten feet of the easement. So, it is not that their garage is in the easement. According to their covenants, any structure has to be ten feet off of the easement. So, what Mr. and Mrs. Stevenson have agreed with the Baggins, to allow this boundary location for this twenty-foot easement to kind of make a jog up here under their property. So, that's the boundary location.
This appears to be neighbors working with neighbors.
Everybody's in agreement?
Everybody's in agreement, and the reason we rushed in here this morning is because we're moving, and the buyer who, of our property, who lives in Washington State, is anxiously awaiting for us to get out so they can move in. You might know him, Paul Liner. He works at the lime plant, manager of the lime plant.
New manager of the lime plant.
Are you folks moving from town, from the area?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, me too.
So, in our rush down here this morning, I did not grab the document that you normally sign.
Is this for the easement creation?
Not for the creation, the boundary location, the movement of it.
Oh, to move the easement?
To move it north, yeah, the, the golf course, I think, golf cart easement.
Okay. I don't even think it's an exemption that the...
That the commissioners...
Commissioner had to look in. That's why it didn't, I was unfamiliar with, or it didn't have an exemption form, because there is not an exemption from the Subdivision and Plating Act for easement, for movement of an easement.
I thought they were calling it a boundary location on there.
Would you like our support since it's here, or is it...
Yeah, if it does not need a motion for the easement, or for the use of the exemption of moving the easement.
Since we do have most of these come across the desk, I will move to support this change to the easement.
Yeah. Thank you. He can't hear very good, so...
Oh, I just asked her, he knew it was for golf carts. Future golf carts, easement. It's not an ability.
So, you can take this upstairs to the clerk and recorder's office, and they'll notarize your signatures. And if you want to leave it there for the signature, to come in and sign.
Take hold all in favor.
Wonderful. Yes, we will. Thank you so much. Good luck with the move. Oh, thank you.
Now, we can go to the certificate of survey policy review.
So, we touched on that, obviously, briefly. Do we think, I guess then, given that there are going to be more and more of these certificates of surveys coming through, to have an actual committee, and I know we spoke about this even last week, this, I believe it's just a follow-up, to solidify our plan, to create this certificate of survey review committee. Being like I explained to you earlier, I email it to the sanitary, and the sanitary gives me his comments on paper. But should we have an actual review committee sit down and look at every single COS? And on that committee, to include everyone that has the state's regulations? With that being said, it would not be able to be weekly, understandably, with the county attorney present.
Sure. I think it's a great idea, I mean, trying to streamline our process first off, and eliminate a lot of the questions that we have to ask here. So, I think that we should do it.
And with that being said...
I know some, some counties meet monthly, every, some biweekly, you know, I don't know. I would, I would think in my mind that, here, when we're busy, we probably may have to meet biweekly or something. You get into the winter months, maybe not so much.
Sure.
I'd like to be a little bit flexible in that, based on what the load is, the reviews we have.
Is there a limit on, is there a time limit on how quick you have to process?
No. We have this checklist, and I don't believe, I can't find anything on here that says it's a certain number of days.
It's always procedurally ten days.
Right, but I don't know that we've ever had that documented anywhere. I think that, you know, that I communicated that to folks, that it would be ten days, you know, two, two working weeks.
Sure.
But I don't know that we ever documented that.
So, would you have the sanitary, and the county attorney, the planner, and the treasurer, clerk and recorder?
That would be my request, just so that we exactly mimic our regulations until such time, if we determine we need to amend our regulations to change that.
A question I have, and I guess I'm going to just, when we have the certificates of survey come before us, except for this one, most of them are very easy. Boundary relocation, changing your easements, most of them don't require much from us. In fact, our only role is to support, not even to approve. And it is, I understand unique that that even comes before us. We've had other surveyors from out of county surprised at our policy, they asked to come to the commissioners. So, I think it's important that as many eyeballs see these as possible, and I like your idea of meeting once a month, but I'm hesitant because of the amount of time. So, if the meeting is on the first, and somebody gets their COS to us since the third, they're waiting a whole month, and then to the next commission meeting, potentially five to six weeks, to get our support on what should be very simple. So, I'm wondering if we can maybe have a streamlined process for the very simple ones. They go out to email to the list of folks, interregs, and possibly more. And if there are any questions or a suggestion by any member of that committee, that it be reviewed in person, then we take it through the process of the committee, say on the first of the month, whatever date we choose. What do you think about something like that? And I'm also wondering, even though our regulations state it shall be sent to A, B, C, and D, I do think public works needs to be involved, and would like to include them, even though they're not in regulations, it is still public domain, therefore, we can include another department. So, those would be my two thoughts, and I'm really happy to open to discussion or expertise.
Nicole, just kind of based on what we've seen in the past, what, how often should we meet? Should we be biweekly?
I think if we, if we have to sit around a table, we should expect no less, I'm sorry, no more frequently than biweekly. If it can be done electronically, still, I suppose that's still ten days, is still our expectation.
Right. Yeah, I don't want to hold up the process.
Right.
I really don't. Just want to make sure that it gets a good, thorough review.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Clerk and recorder's point of view, I would say, I would concur with Laura that most of the time, looking at electronically, would take care of, if that works for the sanitary and the planner, it certainly is going to work for the clerk and recorder. I just can't see putting everybody to another mandatory meeting, unless it's necessary.
I do like very much, though, having that meeting for something that is complex or questionable. I think that's going to be a benefit.
Right, if somebody has, if any of them have a question, I think, it's a good meeting.
And I think that that could mitigate this, and I, you know, of course, speak to this, the legal side of it, but if we do have this committee review them electronically, and if anyone raises a flag that says, "Wait a minute, you know, I want to talk about this more," can we have the option to, to actually sit down at a table and go over it? Our regulations are very vague in how we have to meet. It says the planner will have the documents reviewed by the designated agents of the governing And the planner and governing body agent shall review the claimed exemptions. It doesn't say how, or how long it should take.
Do you, do you review all of the COSs right now?
I do. I look at all of them, I send them all to the sanitary. The clerk and recorder's office does not review them. The clerk and recorder's office checks to verify that the taxes have been paid, and, you know, the appropriate people are signing, and so, I suppose we've checked that box in that way, but that's after it's been by your table. And so, nothing in our regulations do state that the commission should review it.
Question for that, how, what's your typical timeline in, whether our county or other counties, on how quickly they go from filing this certificate of survey to their being approved, or being recorded, I should say?
It's usually like a two-week turnaround. All the other counties, I know Gallatin County, of course, they're a bigger population, they meet every Thursday, so, we have to have the COS there by Wednesday, so they review it on Thursday, so we know by Friday or Monday.
And they have a committee that reviews them, or you're saying the commission?
Yes. No, they have a review committee.
Well, I'm kind of thinking about what Mike was saying there, I mean, Nicole, you review them all. I mean, if there was something that you had a question on, I guess we could all weigh in on it, right?
Correct.
At some point.
At some point in time.
I know from my standpoint, it's kind of nice having a little bit of a heads-up before we come down here and you lay out a COS, right? I'd like to have just a little bit of information on it, compared to that.
Yes, you definitely, I mean, you have, you know, five minutes essentially to determine whether or not...
Right.
It's the appropriate use of the exemption. You should never feel pressured to have to answer at that day, if you need to table it, you certainly can, but you really don't have much time.
So, I mean, I'm kind of okay with sharing electronically, I mean, and then if there's something that needs to be acted on, I guess we could do that.
That's a good idea.
Where are you at on this story? I was telling Nicole, I mean, I'm really not volunteering for another meeting, but I feel like we are getting a lot of, getting a lot of development. I don't know if it's going to slow down anytime soon, and we don't, we don't want these things to pass us by. For me, if I knew, if I could sit down and go through something and have time to identify issues and research prior to, prior to commission meeting where I could hand it to someone and say, what's your legal opinion, like, well, I've never seen this before. I mean, that would, that'd be beneficial from my point of view. It might make sense to kind of triage them, like Laura was saying, I mean, it's just a routine one, just send it through, and then the committee meets on ones that are, if there's any questions.
Sure.
If there's anything dealing with, like, there's one in statute here that if it's, that if that's the irrigation district, the surveyor has to notify the irrigation district, you know, so I mean, that's, those are somewhat unique. If you're dealing with ditches and some of those things, sometimes those are real difficult. Shouldn't say difficult, they may just be a type of more looking. I guess I have a question, another question for Bernadette, so the committee, what happens if the committee in Gallatin County says there's something wrong with this one? I mean, what happens?
They make a recommendation to the commission, the survey still goes to the commissioners. And they either, you know, go by the recommendation, the landowner is there if they have to answer questions or whatever. The commission makes their decision, if they make a decision that they are evading the subdivision of planning act, then they can plead their case, you know, bring in more evidence, or pull together whatever they need to, come back and ask for them to look at it again. And then if they say no a second time, then they're offered to do a subdivision, or again, get legal counsel.
Okay, and so the commission, generally the committee looks at everything, and they send something to the commission, right? Before the commission looks at it, is that right?
Right, yes. They send a recommendation.
Yeah, that would be my, my suggestion for procedure, that, that we have the committee make a recommendation, to the extent that one's needed, if it's something that's just a simple posture that's not needed, because then the, you guys kind of function almost, I mean, it's your decision, we're only making a recommendation, but it gives, probably gives the applicant notice as well that, hey, I need to be prepared to come to the commission and either agree or disagree with the recommendation. I think that. I think it helps just put a little more smoothness in the process for you guys. But that doesn't mean it has to be surprise at the time of the hearing, it could be that we send that to you the week before.
Sure.
And you have that time to look at it.
Okay, I like that idea.
And I think, I mean, this committee would be a public meeting, I mean, everybody in the public wants to be there, certainly if the surveyor or the applicant wants to be there, entitled to it.
Did you have some?
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment that I, you know, whatever is decided, I hope it's a clear procedure. I emailed Nicole last week, I feel in limbo right now, it's like every week is a different, oh, let's do this, or let's do that. So there is no clear procedure, I have no idea what to tell my clients, I have no idea what forms to use. Everything's kind of in a topsy-turvy right now, and we have subdivision regulations to spell that out, and procedures, and now everything's being changed. I think it should go through a process, probably a resolution or such, if the procedures are changed. I don't think it can be, just make a decision each week of what we want to change for the landowners, the surveyors, and not just ask any surveyor that does in the county. You know, change is fine, but let's do it orderly and give clients and surveyors a chance to know what's going on. You know, just like the people here, I didn't know they were here, everything's just kind of confused right now. We don't know how to advise our clients, or what is expected.
Thank you.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
So we have this review procedure, this was never adopted by resolution, it was simply adopted in a public meeting. Can I rework this to include our conversation today and everyone's input regarding how this COS procedure should go? I will send it on to you and then reformat it into a resolution, once you've given it the okay? Is that an appropriate way to proceed? So I will, I will, I will retype this, I will send it to the commissioners now, Corey, just to give you all an opportunity to look at it, make sure that I've captured all of our conversations today.
So does the COS typically, does that also cover family land transfer? The family land transfer, are those separate from the COS?
No, they are still a COS, so I'll have to include some language in here on, if it's a family land transfer, they have the affidavit to complete.
Question for you, Nicole, this will still be based off of what's in our regulations, just adding more detail to that. Perhaps the resolution is the best way to go, but I'm not sure it's required. We could still have a public hearing to adopt an amendment, maybe, I don't even know if it needs to be an amendment, but just, just a thought I wanted to throw out on the table. Maybe that's something we can review together, of us.
Certainly, yeah, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be a resolution of its policy.
Right, and it's not changing our regs, it's just clarifying, and Bernadette's a hundred percent right. We do need that clarification so everybody knows. But I like your plan.
So move on to the 10:30 Nicole Brown Committee to develop the planning certificate of survey review procedure. Reviewer committee, communication postcards for sharing, Agatha County News, I guess, is her next question.
Okay, so the second part of this, there is.
Can we get a vote on the first part? On the debate, maybe we can vote on that?
Not yet, because we don't have the updated policy, we're not changing anything.
Okay, so we'll work on the policy, you're not going to vote on establishing a committee today? Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so at the last meeting, last Monday, we discussed creating some note cards to be mailed out using the EDDM postage, every door direct mailing, just to communicate county information to all households receiving mail in the county. There was a request regarding time and how much money. So I sat down at my desk, and it took me roughly an hour, well, it didn't even take me an hour, it took me forty-five minutes, but I was not including photos or anything like that. So I would estimate one to two hours maximum for the creation of these note cards, printing. I came up with three thousand full color postcards, and we have just under three thousand mailed recipients in the county, but we can only order in increments of one thousand, so I bumped it up to three thousand. The price for that with printing is five hundred seven dollars and fourteen cents. Five hundred seven dollars and fourteen cents. It's three thousand full color postcards printed. Postage is eighteen cents per mailing, using the EDDM. So at three thousand, that's six hundred and forty dollars, am I not incorrect, for postage? So at this time, I will wait for instruction to inform on these, or have I been instructed to look forward on these, on the, the printing of the note cards, or do you want to?
I think there's nothing more important than communicating with the county, and including both the northern end and the southern end, as well as just those in council, and then of course, the donut around the rest of us. I would suggest that we proceed and give Nicole a blessing to do so.
How often do we want to do this? Are we talking like, once a quarter?
I'm going to suggest once a month, and if you just think about very quick brainstorming the next couple of months. This is only a small postcard, so this, about half, roughly this size, you're not going to get a lot on it. But mosquito season is upon us, there's one, one postcard addition with driving people to a website to get more information. We're going to have the budget done here in a couple of months, a state or county on a postcard would be a good idea. LEPC, a lot of people don't know what that is, what a great subject for one of the postcards, what is DES and LEPC? TED, big, big subject, we easily could fill up two or three postcards in a year, certainly should be one this summer. Beyond that, solid waste, roads update. Sanitarium, there's news there, if there is an update to the regulations for planning, that could be one. Public health, that's a big one, WIC is going to, Lewis and Clark County WIC just signed an agreement with Broadwater Health Center to have WIC in the county, so people are gearing that up right now, that's another subject. So I think, I think for consistency, at least for the beginning, we need to do every month, it's not that expensive, it's an investment in communicating, and that's just off the top of my head, sitting here in thirty seconds. I think if we went to each department head and said, hey, what would you like to communicate out? I think we'd have a list far more than for a year.
So with six, six hundred and forty with the postage, Nicole, is that right?
No, I'm sorry, six hundred and forty is the postage.
Oh, and with, and five hundred and seven for the cards?
For printing three thousand full color.
May I ask a question, do you really think the result will justify the cost? I mean, really, when you look at what the budget is in the county, and people are really struggling to be within their budget constraints, and you think eleven hundred dollars a month for information that could be disseminated either in a local newspaper or the website that's hard to find, do you really think it justifies that cost?
I think Shirley just answered her question affirmatively, and I thank you for that, and the website that's hard to find. I think if we can continually remind people how to find the website so that they can give timely and accurate information, I think it's an investment that cannot be, that has to be realized as an important investment. We have, you know, really northern means of communication, we have multiple newspapers. The cost of trying to use each one of those would be easily close to the same amount. And I'm talking about the East Helen News, Belgrade News, Three Forks News, Townsend News. And the price of criminals' postcards, did you go through the, was it the one in Helena?
No, I'm sorry, that was the only thing I didn't write down in my notes, but I can get you that answer.
We might be able to reduce that, and it could be, by how much? I was, I told you I would look into that this weekend, and I did not.
That's okay, I can contact them right now.
We might be able to reduce that too, but I think when it comes to communicating with the public, what's more important than letting people know what their commission and county are doing for them and with issues?
I agree that we need to communicate with our, with our residents, but, you know, thirteen thousand bucks a year? I don't know, I think that's too much money. I really do, you know, quarterly, we're at, what, forty-five eighty-eight? I mean, that's a little bit more of a realistic number for me. And I realize that maybe some of that information may not be timely, but, I don't know.
How about a compromise to start? I solidly think it needs to be once a month, but how about a compromise of every other month?
What are the options that we, we have? We want to discuss this one, what else is available? Any thoughts, Nicole?
You know, I always think that social media is a blessing and a curse.
Yeah, it is.
So it's, you know, it's, it's, can be a free service, but it can also be used negatively.
Any thoughts from anybody out there? How can we communicate? Well, Corey, here's a good example, I ran into somebody yesterday that still does not know that there's twenty-four hour access to all of our canister sites by simply walking through. How long has this been going on? They're going a long time. We're not getting that information out there, we've got to figure out a way to do it. And by getting that information out there, they're not in here looking for the answers. So we need some ideas, you guys, we've got, anybody?
Well, my recommendation is, I mean, if you're to take that thirteen thousand a year and use it to actually improve our website, make it a very functional, user-friendly, easy to find, and do some, there's, there's, it's really cheap to do some creative social media advertising or to push people to the website. Anyone that's done a relatively modern campaign has done it, and it's, it's easy. That's how people are getting the information now, I mean, there's a handful, and most people in this county who don't use the internet in some way. I think that's the way to go. If you're going to do this card, then it needs to just not, it can't just be a commission. Give me, you're going to do it twelve times a year, give me two of those times when I can say, here's what's going on in the county attorney's role. And my concern is, it, not concern, a thought, is it needs to be the information that I want to convey, not the information that I provide that then gets edited to what, whoever's publishing it wants to convey. Same, same sheriff's office or any other department, and I think there's no reason for that. That's a, that's like a pie is only this big, and who gets what chunk of the pie? If you go to some of these other more creative ways to communicate information, the pie keeps expanding as active as we want to be communicating. pie keeps expanding as, as active as we wanna be communicating. But when I, if you go down to the Three Forks newspaper and you sit down with them, they'll write any article on any topic in one of those things. Same with, same with the other. I just, I think you're gonna find a lot of their use for that.
But, did the question back there?
Dave Bows?
Yes. Go on, Dave.
I would have to, what Corey's saying, and, and a really well-done, functional website would go a long way in this county. There are some who don't use the electronic media, and there are ways of using some kind of, but you don't have to print a postcard, a colored postcard. You, you can communicate that in the, uh, in the nu, in the newspaper, but even not everybody gets the newspaper. So it's a mixed bag, but I think his, his idea, his approach is more solid than a, a printed postcard.
Brandon and Lynn, I know you guys got a pretty good website. Everybody pretty, it seemed like you're looking at it pretty informative.
And we have, in our, ours, we have, there's an app on ours. So like, you can go on our webpage and get an app, and you can get every morning, at five twenty-two in the morning, you will find out who was booked into jail and who was released in the last twenty-four hours. We have a press release section in there. The media pays attention to it. We're very active on our, our social media account as well. But a lot of times, I, I could be responding somewhere in either K T V H, K X L H, or, or one of those media sources. They're calling me like, hey, we just saw a press release, we saw something on Facebook, and we heard something. Well, can you tell us? And so, you know, like I've said in the past, um, we've had so, some of our social media, posts been seen to the upwards of a hundred and ten thousand people. So it is a great resource. There's not a lot of people that do use it, but the, the part of, you know, you might not have a huge demographic right here in Townsend or Broadwater County that's using that social media, but the thing is, there's still quite a vast group that are, and that creates a conversation point from, from different individuals. Even though some of you might not have seen it directly, they can communicate that, and that's a, a good way to get a lot of people talking about a small subject at one time. You know, our, our website, you know, there's some things I'd like to see changed with it, be a little more, uh, active, I guess, but, um, you know, so that costs money as well, and we try to keep our costs down, but...
You guys manage that yourself, or you have somebody help you?
No.
So somebody else?
Seth, Seth's our, Seth's our IT guy.
What are we gonna do in a month?
Shawna's, Shawna's like...
Yeah, Shawna's taking over, so...
All right.
But it, it's, uh, there's a lot to it, and you get to make it your own, and that's, and that was through government webpages. Most want it. Most want the government pages, and so they specialize in government functions, so that's, it's been a good thing, so...
Yes, Lynn?
I've used the website from the Sheriff's Department, and I'm able to get into it very, very easy, and I am not a person that does computer things. I tried to get into the Broadwater County Commissioners one. Now, that's a different story. If you guys could make it copy the template of the Sheriff's Department, it would be excellent, because it does, I get a lot of information. I do the Sheriff's Department just about every day, and I'm able to pop it right on. I still yet to get into some of the Commissioners things. It's, it's not an easy thing to get to. So, yeah, if we could get a different way of that, follow these guys' kind of template, it would be perfect.
So can we, at least for starters, um, let Nicole charge forward with an addition through the Communications Committee, so it's not all on you? And put that forward, review and approval? Or do you want it? Yeah, so we can start communicating with people, yes, mosquito season?
Yeah. Do we have the Communications Committee?
Loosely, yes, we do. Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we take one, we have offices that whoever's available in that office to come sit down and meet. And I do agree with our website, you know, it's TownsendMT.com, and Broadwater County is a button, and I think we've grown up. I think we deserve our own, our own page. Linked to TownsendMT.com, similar to the Sheriff's Office, their page is linked on TownsendMT.com, so people are used to going there, but maybe it's time that we look at getting a Broadwater County page, not just a, a section under that.
I'd, I'd really like to explore that option and see where we're at with that.
So, I, I'd like to suggest that we do postcards quarterly, and then we take and we look at establishing our own website. And if it gets to the point where our websites get a lot of use, then we can eliminate the points of postcards. The, the issue that I have with eliminating the postcards is you, you, you may have only a handful of people that only, that don't use the internet, but it's still a handful of people. And a lot of times, those are people that don't really have any other way, and if they don't use the internet, the only other access they have is none.
Chairman, I would also suggest the first postcard, the priority step would be having the information of what websites, the social media need to go to.
There you go.
Yeah.
Do we even have, we don't, we don't have a Broadwater County Facebook page, do we? I mean, I know there was one at one point in time.
A number of counties have done it, and the caution is that you have to have somebody who monitors it twenty-four seven. And the reason is, is because there's, it's a forum for a lot of misinformation. You, you were in a meeting and I saw an employee posting absolutely untrue information on Facebook. Well, that's, that's one of those things that will happen, because that's the nature of it. So you've gotta have somebody monitoring that, that can show truth to misinformation. Do we have that kind of hours available for our personnel? So that's why a lot of counties have stopped it, and a lot of counties have said, it costs us a lot of money, but it's worth it to make sure the truth gets out. So that's two sides.
Seth? And just to kinda help on that issue, I know like with our Facebook page, there's only certain people that I allow to post on it, so the sheriff does, so like him and myself, and then Shawna can post on it. And I'm pretty sure you can also disable comments if you would like as well, where you guys can post whatever you want, but nobody can post on it. So you could just delegate somebody that you wanted to run that page, and that would be the only person that could do it. There's ways to do that.
Good point. Thank you. That might be something to look into as well, and that's pretty, for the most part.
I don't have Twitter, but I, I know that that's an effective tool, but I don't know how many people in the county actually have Twitter to get out with these, these press releases or, you know, this instant news.
If they're under thirty, that's what they're using. They don't use Facebook, and they don't use websites. So that might be something to also look into since we're expanding.
Any other discussion? So, and so is this the direction we're gonna go for? We're gonna try to have somebody manage this page for us? Is that, is that what we're looking for, or are we gonna try to have a staff member do this? You got plenty on your plate already.
Managing the page, you know, has not been terribly cumbersome, but right now, you know, everyone is correct, there's not a lot of content on there. You know, right now, we're putting Commissioner Minutes and agendas, any agendas that any other boards send me have put on there. But to be more, more effective and more force, we need to have valid content, and I think, you know, but what I said in the very beginning, we need to be sure that we have content. We need to, there needs to be a reason for people to wanna go to the website.
So maybe we need somebody to help us develop the page, and then we can...
And then we can do the content. Yes, and I don't know if the answer is the same company that we're using right now with the TownsendMT.com, or do we go to a different company? That, that company has been user-friendly for me to upload information, but it also is going to take everyone in the county, and, you know, so like, you said you have content that you would like to share with public, perfect. But I don't know that we're communicating that with employees, that, hey, if you have something you want on the, on the website, get it to me. And then, of course, you know, which is why the Communications Committee was formed, I don't want to be the gatekeeper of what does and does not go on the website.
Well, I would think each department would have a link on, once you create this page, there's a link that they could go to and get that information, so they can control that content.
The other question is look. So I wanna know, when we built the TownsendMT.com website, what we did is we looked at a lot of websites for other communities. I think the three of us should look at some websites for other counties, determine what look, what structure, what workability we like, and then see which companies built those and pass that on to Nicole and dear Communications Committee, so it's on your shoulders. And we should help too, we should be integrally involved in this whole process. We have been contacted by a company that's interested, um, to start at thirteen thousand and then a certain amount per month, and it would be monitored in-house. So that kinda gives us an idea of what the starting point is. It would be roughly that. Probably a investment to start, like you said, we are going up, and entering the twenty-first century probably is a real good idea with our own website presence that links to TownsendMT.com, but is very user-friendly and simple.
So, do you have a direction for me, my next steps?
I would suggest maybe a working meeting.
Okay.
For us, um, maybe, maybe next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, but the Wednesday after. Have the Communications Committee help us have done our homework, and then sit down and talk about what it is we want, and how to pursue that. Okay, that's step one, and just continue that to figure out what we're doing.
We'll have some input from other departments as well?
There will be a department meeting, it's a great place to remind folks, I know it's been brought up before, but sometimes it does take reminding, and that's why the repetition, I think, is important.
So that will be next Wednesday, September?
Nine, yeah. Hope that works. Was that too soon?
We have a board of health at law.
Neither one?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Deputy Commissioners, just for your twenty county budget spending analysis, revenue analysis, filled allocation, computer replacement.
Nothing much changed since last week. I was told you guys had something wrong with computers. That's been on the last three days, so I don't... Some of you guys might have a plan. Which would affect some of our budgeting. We're just still kind of in limbo, preliminary, waiting on straggling numbers. Things like, um, some of the mineral royalty funds, predatory animal for the next year, together grazing, some of those little odds and ends of revenue funds. That's really not anybody's one responsibility. So just waiting for some of those straggling numbers to come in, final decisions on help requests. Expenditures.
Are we waiting on information from Josh on the computers?
Are we?
Hi, I have a doctor. The only thing I, I called D I S for, for, for new computer, they were a thousand dollars per computer. I called Dell, I have a contact with Dell, and I was able to buy two computers with monitors and everything for a thousand and fifteen dollars, so I cut my price almost in half. He said they're refurbished, but they're guaranteed for three years, and he has them, about thirty of them. As far as just changing the old ones over to Windows ten from Windows seven, most of them in my office are over five years old, so they need replaced anyway, but I don't know what the other offices are looking at. I don't know what it would, what the cost would be just to change the Windows. That wasn't, wasn't anything that would work in my office. I didn't, I haven't even started that conversation with Josh, but...
If, if we go with the Dell, is there the issue with changing software compatible with the, with all the D I S stuff, or?
No, I've, I've had two of them switched over, and I haven't had any problem with them at all, so...
Okay, I had that conversation with Josh, uh, two weeks ago, it was in June, mid-June. So we ended up with leftover funds from the budget, purchased a new computer for me. Mine was six years old, and then, or maybe mine was five years old. And then Sherry's is a year newer, so we didn't buy a replacement. They're just gonna do an upgrade to a good ten. And, uh, we did the same size computer for mine, so I can use the same documentation. And then Brooke's waiting to see on her surcharge funds, she might have some funds to do a replacement computer for her, and we did have to do a replacement printer. So our office is all covered with year-end plus funds. Sherry's with the upgrade to Windows ten, will get a few more years' life out of it, so, um, I'm hoping it's two years before we have to replace hers. But he did say that they can do it at a disc, obviously a lot cheaper to do an upgrade than to do it in a computer, and that they are, I think he said January, is it January? All support service ends for computers that are Windows seven?
June of twenty twenty?
June of twenty twenty, okay. And so they're, they're fully ready to do all support for Windows ten, and they're gonna, soon not gonna be able to do any others. That upgrade looked like a viable option for us, so we did it. There is a concern about warranties running out on computers, though. So our Sherry's will be passed warranty, uh, after, I think Jan, maybe that's where the term warranty ends, January, but we'll try it on.
Did you, did they all, they all die next June, right? Not, not January, June?
I think it's June. Their support stops for them.
Support stops, yeah.
Yeah.
At least that's what Black Mountain sent us, and that's what they're looking at for us, 'cause like Michelle and I, we have two thousand and seven Windows. So if they're gonna just continue that, we're gonna have to upgrade to do anything Black Mountain, which is kind of important with what we do. I think our computers are okay, it's just the software.
So do we, do we have, do we have our filled allocations figured out where we have?
We made some motions in June for some of it. Fifty thousand to the Mason Memorial, ten thousand to election machines, a hundred thousand for the Varys. Computers have been ongoing, so we don't have any numbers from there. Computers have been ongoing, so we don't have any numbers from there. Comprehensive liability. We really didn't do much of that last week. We're kind of waiting on this year's finalized, the final deep creek numbers. And Michelle just had another bill from W E C for some follow-up. I think you guys saw that in claims, but still have some deep creek stuff on it. Final work. We're kind of waiting, you guys were going to talk about possibility of a pilt loan, long-term. For tall waste, we're still working on the board of investments for that, for the pilt loan. Nope, I haven't anything in motion or concrete wise of all the requests.
And out of that money that we had last year, we never, the hundred thousand dollars of hospital never got used, right?
Right. We kind of had thrown together a list of what you want to spend it on. That back June 20th. So, we're right along in that week with the yearly's, like your, the trees, the casa, food pantry, some of those every-year transfers. Haven't done any of that yet, but I think you guys were kind of wanting to wait till we knew what we had to work with between deep creek and some tall waste before you committed to all that.
And we should have an idea when we get the preliminary budget for that.
Because like this year, we didn't have any veterans' burials, like we did the year before, so there's still some sitting in there. But every year it is different. And intended burials, we're going to talk about that. County matches to the M C H and the home health, still going to do those. We have repayment and intercap loan proceeds from three years ago, that previous loan. There's the limestone tower lease site, so there's some of those. And we're looking at planning, library C I P, airport C I P, ambulance C I Ps. And that was just last, kind of last Monday, some of those we were.
Are we still going to need thirty thousand for the victim's witness advocate, or is that?
Her new budget is, that was approved is, well, it's not, I guess it's not approved, it's recommended from the committee. Their meeting is going to be, I think, August, but that's ninety-six thousand over two years. So, that's a shortfall of just four thousand per year, if that's what's approved.
We don't need to take any of that out of pilt.
Will we use the hundred thousand for, where are we at with the Barris case?
We need to spend a field.
Still in limbo.
I understand there was going to be a reimbursement for the juvenile we had in detention last year. You guys having an update on that?
I'm not aware of that reimbursement.
What's that?
We were told that juvenile probation is going to pay for majority of that. Tammy had spoken possibly to Mike Merrill, but I don't know, but that's what they said. So, we can get back to you on it.
That'd be great, thank you. So, do we want to maybe address it in two weeks after we have the preliminary budget, know where deep creeks at, know where solid wastes at, and we look at the rest of it?
Yeah.
We've made some preliminary decisions, but we just need to put them through a vote. With the computers, should we vote to ask Josh to update all of the Windows 7? And then give a report from him on what computers should be updated this year and which ones could wait for a year, four, two, or three year plan?
I think there was some computers that were, aren't they like five years or older?
Yeah.
That we were talking about on the updates, right?
Correct, we were looking at the ones that are highlighted in red. Some of those have been done, some are not needed. And so, that's why I was thinking if we had Josh do the Windows 7, since that will have to be done anyway, and then put together a three-year plan for us. But.
Yeah, I think that's right, that's what we were discussing.
We're going to have to do that anyway, we don't really have any choice with that.
Right.
Yep.
I think we should do that.
And we're going to also discuss if you weren't going to roll them all this year, right?
Correct.
Steal or stagger them.
Yeah. Yeah. So, get a price from Josh and then maybe approve that solidly next week for two weeks?
Sure.
Then we have, when do we have the preliminary budget hearing, is that?
Next Monday.
The 15th?
Uh huh, correct.
Ten o'clock, I believe, first thing, or ten fifteen, and after, follow comment, any subsequent reviews? So, maybe ten fifteen.
Debbie, could you send out an email that lets department heads know that it's required that they be there?
Okay.
Get to the statue if you don't know it.
Yes, Brandon.
So, I have a question. Can we get the numbers for solid ways, the deep creek project, and what you guys are all talking about for pilt? And I also was told to remove vehicles from my budget. And so, I did do that, so I'm assuming that that's going to be a decision for pilt, but I haven't heard that get brought up today, and I'd like to know where you're at on that.
Yeah, Debbie should have the numbers for, can you get those numbers for solid?
Well, we still have claims to finish paying for, and Michelle's been working really hard to get anything caught up. This is a matter of this next month, all the straggler claims coming in. After court this morning. It was like two hundred and some thousand in the negative with pilt.
Pilt or solid?
I'm just stopping, sorry.
It's off the top of my head, I'm thinking it's close to two fifty.
Yeah, it was up there.
Is that what you're asking, Brandon?
Yeah, well, I'm just, my, I'm trying to envision, you know, everything happening and where we're going to be at with what's left over at pilt. And I didn't get, we didn't get mentioned, so I didn't want to be last on the list, I guess, for absolute necessity.
I think if Debbie could just send this sheet to Brandon, I think that would answer his questions.
Brandon, real quick, where are you at with your leasing idea?
I have it. It's going to take a, probably a working meeting with the three of you to sit down and find out what we could do for a commitment. This year would lessen what we need a lot because they buy our fleet from us. So, they would write us a check for our entire fleet. If we, there are some vehicles that I don't want to be bought, so it would be a little lesser amount, but that'd be revenue in. And it would make the first-year payment, and I kind of have it worked out where it would, basically, instead of asking for eighty-four thousand this year, I would ask for fifty. And they, how they make their money is four percent interest, and then we make yearly payments to them. And then you have a schedule where, at the end of the lease, they sell the vehicle, and then they write you a check for what's left. So, there's some things that we all need to look at and see if there can be some commitments from you guys to get that vehicle replacement program. It seems to be pretty good, but I'm not a banker or anything, but.
Do they come equipped, or do we got to?
Alls it is, we choose the vehicles, we choose the equipment, and we transfer equipment to what can be transferred to the vehicles. They're a bank, is what it is.
She'll sell the outfit cost.
What's that?
Then we have the outfit cost.
No, that's all included in my.
About next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it for next Wednesday, work for you.
So, the seventeenth, that should work. In the morning?
Yeah. Is it nine o'clock that we scheduled that working meeting, right?
Right.
So.
Okay, move on to our, yes, sir.
I just thought, you know, I talked to Tammy about that juvenile, and she's going to submit all that. She hasn't done it yet, but she has questions to this, and she'll be back with that.
Thank you. Jessica Bushnell, weed spraying, dude.
Well, I am waiting for one more contractor to return with the bids for county road work. So, I'm just kind of going to hold until I get that final submitted. And then I'll present all three of them to you guys. We're going to switch our contract around with our fiscal year rather than starting in the middle of May, so it'll match up on all of our other funding.
Did you have all the, is that the one you're waiting to compare with the other ones that we already had, which are priced?
Yep.
Okay. Does he have a deadline, or?
I told him to get them to me as soon as possible. I said that if we can get them by Thursday, he can get on next week's agenda, would be perfect. I called him, emailed him, and texted it, and it's hopefully going to get back to me.
So, put the same thing on for the T V?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same time?
Yeah, whatever it's going to be for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we've got minutes here from July first, 2019. Motion to approve the minutes.
Sure, I'll move that we approve the minutes from July, is it first?
July first, yeah.
Or second?
Motion to debate second to approve minutes July first, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion carries? So, we got mail here, receipt from the Department of Interior for pilt, six hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and four dollars. Montana Department of Transportation. Approval of the Broadwater County DUI Task Force Plan.
That's good news.
And we have a Townsend, City, County Airport lease agreement with Dylan and Jessica Lancelot. We need to sign it.
Is that right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like what they do out there with that.
A move that we approve the agreement with the Lancelots for the City County Airport lease agreement.
Motion to debate the second to approve the lease between Broadwater County and Dylan and Jessica Lancelot, in favor? I quote saying? Okay, that's all we got from the mail and everything else. Anybody, anything else?
I have a couple of things, did you too?
I did too. I just wanted to talk about our fair management position. Still didn't get them last week. And talk with Michelle, all she's waiting on is what we need to put in the act. So, hours and pay, so we can get that advertised in hopes of maybe having somebody here that can just observe.
Yeah. We should get the salary matrix and determine what the salary should be. So, best management practices is if somebody has been with you for years and they're making, say, fifty dollars an hour, you don't advertise for the very same position at eighteen. So, what we generally do is we take what that person was making who was with us for years, and we go under it.
Right.
And then make a range using the salary matrix.
And I did get that information from her.
Oh, good, okay.
I got what the current is, what the band is, and what the median is.
Okay, so what is the current?
The current, what, nineteen ninety-eight? Band was fifteen seventy-six to twenty-five seventy-six. Median is twenty-seventy-six.
So, I would suggest, based on experience, that you would want to maybe, and I'm open to debate on this, just throwing something out there, say sixteen to twenty-one.
And then that would be based on their experience, make that determination?
Yeah. We should give a deadline for applications advertising house, first would be a good idea. Up to, but not to exceed thirty hours, or up to twenty-nine, not to exceed twenty-nine hours per week because of health insurance. And even with the fair, that works, because the fair is like Wednesday, Thursday through Sunday, the week, and then Saturday. So, it's not a full fair.
Okay. Yeah.
And then we always do. Position is open until. Position is open until Pilt. So we have a deadline, and then if we don't have anybody in the first round that's still open, we can have someone come in after. Since this person works under the commission, we should have a fair board member, the three commissioners. I would suggest either Public Works or a weed coordinator, because they work so closely together. And Allison has gone, but maybe we could have Andrea sit in on that, and then Michelle will be there.
Goodness, and then you made some suggestive changes. I think that they all have. I think that that's good. For the job description.
John, will you do that too? Is he good with it? Good, okay.
Yeah, right, yeah. So I'll do that, I'll get with Michelle, we'll give the ad worked up and get it in this week's paper. You guys are getting it though?
Um, I would suggest the B C D C list.
Uh, B C D C, yeah.
Yeah, it's free, one, we are watching money.
Right.
And two, it goes to vastly more people and with the skills that we're looking for. This person's gonna have to be proficient with computers, searching websites, internet, all of that. So if they, if they don't look at the B C D C list or the website, I'm not sure they come to us with qualifications that they need.
Sure. But I have talked with John, the Fair Board Manager, and John Roser. Anyway, he's where, what we do and make his comments as well, so...
We need to review the contract before hiring a new manager, so that they start with clarity?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want that on the agenda, or to do that via the Fair Board?
The review, I mean?
The contract we have right now with the rodeo association and the city.
Oh, yeah, you know, I guess I've never seen that, so yeah, we need to, I'm sure I could take a look at that, see what we're out there.
And we can do that in parallel, we can still advertise as long as we get the other taken care of during the time between the one and the deadline.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. I'll be sure to have Michelle email us all the copy with the ad in before it comes out.
Sounds good.
Look at it, make sure that we agree on that, okay?
Anything else?
Anything from you, Donald? I have a short list. TV district. The UPS went out at the TV tower in the cyber room. Harold Gibbs is the gentleman that kind of monitors that for us. He called me, he said it's burned out, it needs to be replaced. I talked to Mike, so Mike went ahead and ordered it. But we talked some time ago about Harold getting a computer to do the reporting and also take up with him and plug into the systems. That was, I understood gonna be, Franklin was gonna take care of it with Harold in December, never happened. You guys good with me just telling Harold, go ahead and get a computer, charge it to the TV district?
Yeah, what kind does he need, I mean?
He needs a laptop or a pad that he can carry with him there. He knows what he's doing, so I would suggest I don't. I would suggest letting Harold go ahead and find what's needed.
Sure, I'd like to know that cost before we do it.
Okay.
You know?
All right, I'll ask him to make sure he gets that to us before buying the purchase. Go ahead, all right. And then the quiet zone. I sent this to, let me just back up. This is the email that we got from T McElpine. Couple months ago, G B Carson's went to a bunch of people, a bunch of people. I think it was seven pages of petition, brought it back to us. He is interested in what's called a quiet zone. Number of communities have done this quiet zone. What it is, is the county or the city, actually, I back up again. The city votes and determines that they want to create a quiet zone. As long as there's the lighted arms, the railroad that come down, the laws or the rules change to make it a lot easier to do the step that cities and counties need to do for a quiet zone. One of the things is putting a barrier in that road, so it divides the directional traffic. So this is something that does need to be led by cities because they're most often in cities. I did forward everything to the city and then followed up. They are not interested in a quiet zone. And what a quiet zone is, is because all these, these safety measures have been put in place and that are sent to the railroad, M R L comes out and inspects what's done and says, yes, we will make this a quiet zone. What that means is there's no horn from the first starting point, the first arms, to the second. For Townsend, this would be north of town and past River Road. So I sent this to the city, Colleen sent an email back after a follow-up, and she said, we're not interested. So I did a little bit of research, and we do have River Road that is not in the city that we could do a quiet zone for. I'm not sure it solves the problem because it's not just one horn. They honk the horn at each crossing. Some of the engineers honk it, you know, very short and respectfully, and others lay on it. So what the citizens are upset about, and this is like the set seven pages of petition signatures, is the laying on the horn and how many train trips we have through town per day. I told them I would bring this up today. Are you guys interested in having, we needed to have a working meeting with the city anyway, interested in talking with them on a casual basis about a quiet zone? Or letting them take the lead and follow their lead? Yes, those are my questions. We can certainly look into what we could do on River Road, but again, I'm not sure just that one solves the problem, but it might show what can be done. So those are, those are some, some of the arguments on both sides for that. What do you guys think?
They have crossing arms on Sixth and Broadwater, that's where they have them.
Yeah.
And they have them on Indian Creek?
Yes. Yeah, and that might be it, but I thought there was one more of this one that I think it might just be the two. I don't know. Going off the memory, which...
On the field, they have, they don't have any at Hawn's, I believe. That would be the next...
Just the two.
Yeah, no crossing arms.
Yeah.
And there's even one prior to getting to Hawn's, that goes into the field, you know?
Yeah.
The other thing we could do that is cheap and free, write a letter, please be respectful and honk at your horn. Their perspective, this perspective of the engineer is there was a rash of people committing suicide by train, you know, driving out their own tracks or going out their own tracks and getting hit. So they lay on the horn to make sure people know that they're coming, keep people away. The perspective of a person snoozing is just pop the horn, don't need to lay on it. So we could write a letter and just ask that they pop the horn versus, you know, laying on it. But they're the professionals in their business, and the train was here first. However, there's a lot more trips than people expected when we moved in, and the horn honking is excessive when they lay on it. So there really are two sides to this coin, too.
There is, and I would imagine that that engineer has, takes all that liability, you know?
Going through there, yeah, I don't think so.
And I have also heard the comment that some of the horns are not, not hard to listen to, and some of them are very sharp, so it depends on the train that's going through.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that liability for the engineer is not only insurance and money, but the emotional hit somebody has to take when they hit and kill somebody. So, you know, it's, it's a much more complicated issue when you start looking at all the different pieces. It's like the one in that paper that Dan Clark did.
Sure.
And all those little pieces are a different side of this coin.
Have these folks talked to M R L? I mean, what was their response, been back from them, I'm curious?
Um, I've met with Jim Peterson on this before. They're open to work with us on this. That was probably four, five years ago, it was a long time ago. I would imagine that a letter would, would be well received, just letting them know kind of what people are thinking. They haven't themselves reached out because they don't know who to call.
Did they turn this petition into the city?
Um, I turned it into the city, they turned it into us, it was in our mailbox, and I forwarded it to the city. So we still have a copy, if you guys want to see it.
Well, it'd be good, you'll send, send M R L a letter and then also sit down with the city and see if you can't do anything.
Just have a preliminary discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll draft a letter to vote, and then we can review it, I'll go from there.
Maybe you have to see if M R L couldn't attend that meeting also.
Yeah. Yeah.
When is this petition thing sent out and done? Because I live less than, I mean, I live right across the street from the thing, and I never got somebody knocking on my door or anybody saying anything about a petition to sign for any noise zone thing, so this is like really weird to me. Where did this petition come up at? I never heard about it, and I'm less than a block away from it. I mean, I'm right across the street. I don't care if that train honks all night long, it don't matter to me, I tune it out. You get used to it. Don't start something that you can't finish here. You're starting up a little nest here of things that it's not gonna happen. Just leave it be. Let these people complain, they'll get used to it or something. This is starting up something that, you know, hey, I have to have them all night long by me listening to the shhhhh of the train because they work on it right there all night long. So the next step are we gonna do, say, now you can't work on the trains right across the street from me at night because it makes noise? I had to get used to it. I have to accept the fact that they were here first. Where I live, I can't control that. I have to get used to it, I'm not gonna make them be quiet for me. It's, I have to respect it and get used to it just like everybody else. And I never saw a petition, so how did seven pages of petition get done? If they're gonna go all the way up and down Main Street right there, my house should have been there because I'm right on it.
Well, and I can't answer your questions, but I can tell you that we give due diligence to all citizens. So the citizens who put this together, I don't know when or if they stopped at your house, that's up to them. But they've brought it to us, and we are giving them the same respect we give you right now with your opinion. They also have an opinion.
It's the city's problem, not the commissioners.
And we're just respecting our citizens and our people.
It's the city's problem, not yours, so let the city take care of it.
So I will go ahead and follow through and work on this together.
Anything else?
Uh, the CBAs are done, we should be able to get those on the agenda. And I will be gone next Monday. I am going to the National Association Counties Conference, I've kind of mentioned it in passing. And that's in Las Vegas in July, so I kind of feel like I'm being punished. Not moving forward to Vegas in July. But we do have a lot that we're doing with justice and public safety and going to be addressing in victim services. So hopefully this debacle that happened this year, we can address at the national level. And for the record, not a penny of my travel will be covered in any way by Broadwater County. So I serve at the pleasure of the Montana Association Counties on this. Anything they don't cover, I will cover my own pocket. Will be gone the eleventh through the fifteenth. I get home about one in the morning on the sixteenth. So, I think that's it.
Okay. So we will recess until one o'clock, closed door. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you. Thanks, Ann.